Fine.
Perfect. Okay. And Sherri, just let me know when you're ready.
We are ready. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, in close, I call back from closed session, the meeting, stat, uh, the council discussed the two items on the agenda, but no action was taken. And with that, I see it at 7:15, so we are adjourned. And. So Sherri, let me know when you're ready for me to start the successor meeting.
I'm ready.
Okay, it is still 7:15. I call to order, uh, the October 6th successor agency regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
Here. Can I have a motion for approval of the final agenda?
Is that moved?
And can I have a second? Vote, please.
I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Donahue on the second?
It was.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, any ex parte communications for the successor agency? I seeing none? Do I have a motion, oh, so public comments for the successor agency meeting?
We have no comments at this time.
And no hands raised. Perfect. Okay. So, uh, motion for the consent calendar, please?
Is that moved?
I'll go ahead and second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, we have no action items this evening, so I will hereby adjourn this meeting at 7:17. Okay, that brings us to our regular meeting. And Sherri, just let me know when you're ready for me to start.
I'm ready.
Okay, it is now 7:17 on October 6th, 2020. The City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall has closed the public. The agenda states the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comments by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www dot emeryville dot org and clicking on the City Council Agendas and Videos. Once you are there, you will see a link entitled "Smith an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand function feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via email, I'm sorry, via e notification and on social media. Okay, that brings us to the roll call. Do we need to do that again? I think we're good?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, and do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
It's still moved.
A second.
I have a motion and a second for the final agenda.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. That brings us to... I have lost my place. That brings us to the special orders of the day. We have none? Announcements of commission committee vacancies?
No announcement tonight. Mayor Pats?
Great, thank you. Uh, City Council Members, uh, special announcements, reports on meetings attended. Nobody attended any meetings? And no reports. Um, I'll just say that Friday night was the art show, and it was wonderful. Member, uh, Councilmember Bowers did a wonderful job as our bartender. Did you ever get a total of how much we raised?
I have been waiting for that.
Okay. Um, and I just think, I think it went off really well, other than the MC was a little weak. I thought it was an excellent virtual art show.
The mayor was an excellent MC, everybody.
Yeah. Uh, notice how I did that subtly, so I had to get a compliment?
Oh, because I was, notice how I was ready for that?
Yeah, no, fishing, yeah, reeled that one on in. Okay, City Manager, good luck following that with your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on behalf of the staff, we wanted to thank all of you for supporting the Celebration of the Arts. Um, it certainly was a different format this year, but I thought it was a really fun community event. It was both expansive and intimate at the same time. Uh, we also wanted to give a special shout out, um, to Councilmember Medina for connecting us up with U.S. Digital Response, which helped, uh, move the, the, um, event online. And I just wanted to personally acknowledge Mr. Mayor, three city staff who played a, a primary role in this. Chad Smalley, Emmy Tyrio, and Amber Evans, uh, who all did a lot of work to support Sharon and, and the Celebration community. So we just wanted to thank you all for that. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, um, as announced by email yesterday, the city has a new finance director. Uh, we have appointed Brad Farmer, who will be joining us on November 30th, uh, from the city of Pittsburgh. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You know, I had one other thing in my notes to announce, and I forgot to do it. Um, I have, uh, Ron Lidle, a freelance writer in town who works with, um, East Bay Children's Theater. He's their resident musical playwright. He has been nominated for, or has been, um, will be receiving the Alameda County Arts Commission, Alameda County Arts Leadership Award. And since he's a local here in Emeryville, I wanted to be sure to give him a shout out. Um, if you have not seen that in the papers, I thought that was really nice one, so. Uh, with that, it brings us to ex parte communications for items on this agenda. Member Bowers?
I just need to report that I spoke to the applicant's representatives for item 11.1.
And anyone else? Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the public comment portion of the evening, and I have a formal announcement. Bear with me one second while I queue it up. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted their online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please, uh, use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. I will ask at this time if the city clerk has any comments received via the online comment card.
Uh, no online comment cards, but we do have one raised hand. Adrian Robinson?
Great. She is up.
Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening, Mayor Pats and council members. I'm the shop steward for the, uh, civilians at the police department, and, um, at the October 20th closed session meeting, management will be sharing the proposal to change the existing work schedule for dispatchers from 5 eighths to 4 10, 3 12. Brought by the management during the bargaining session with SEIU the summer of 2018. SEIU did not have any problem with the concept of the proposed change in the schedule, but identified a variety of issues that would need to be worked through. It was mutually agreed to form a, a joint labor committee to discuss the proposed change in schedule. The Joint Labor Committee has met four times till date. We have identified some key issues, and those that involve financial implications will be presented to you at the study session. These are asks that put us on parity with the police officers who operate under the 4 10, 3 12 schedule. However, the primary reason why I'm here speaking is to convey one key message. Currently, we have seven solo dispatchers and three trainees, which gives us 10 full-time employees in dispatch. However, trainees are not eligible to work in a solo capacity or be added to any schedule until they have passed their training and elevated to solo status. Management believes eight dispatchers are sufficient to make the 4 10, 3 12 schedule work. However, management does not account for anyone using their vacation time or other entitled leaves, which will decrease staffing levels in the dispatch center from eight people to about six or five, depending on the circumstances. Vacation time alone comes to 31 weeks a year for the 10 dispatchers. With 52 weeks a year, we're looking at a schedule where most of the year someone will be away, and their shift will need to be covered. As a small agency, we do not have the luxury to pull from other staff members to cover shifts as some agencies do. Implementing a schedule using eight people will cause dispatchers to work alone up to 16 hours in a 24-hour period, and their extra days off will get absorbed in mandatory overtime. As with the nature of calls for service being unpredictable, coupled with long hours and working alone means no breaks, no fresh air, meals interrupted, can't use the bathroom in peace, et cetera, and brings unnecessary stress. Yet, the dispatcher is expected to remain professional, courteous, alert, and accurate while performing their duties. We're not saying we don't want the schedule. We want it. But we want to work out the issues and want this to be beneficial for the employees and the city. We're at a point in time where society is seeking to look at their police departments with fresh perspectives. Civilian positions in the police department have historically been sidelined in almost all jurisdictions, and we should be looking at ways to support the needs of dispatchers who provide key service to the community and critical support to the police officers. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I see one other hand raised, but I'm guessing by the name that they might be wanting to talk on item 11.1?
Would you like me to enable them to check?
Please, because they might have a separate issue.
Oh, yeah, that's Dana Westmoreland. You're correct. And I did put in a speaker card for this because I'm working right now.
So for 11.1?
For the house, uh, the housing teardown? Yeah.
That's our next item, so let us finish the consent calendar, and we'll come right to you for the first.
And I do have the speaker card.
Give me my speaker card. That would be great. I need to get back into my own work Zoom meeting myself.
Okay, we have your speaker card. Thank you. Okay, with that, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Is that moved?
And I will go ahead and second it to move things along, so we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, the current consent agenda, sorry, not calendar, is moved. Um, so next we move to items 11, the public hearings, 11.1. This is a continuation of our second hearing for our, our item from last time. Um, I see Navarre has joined us. I don't think, oh, Member Martinez, did you have a question?
Uh, I don't have a question. I just, um, need to let everyone know, as with at the last meeting, I need to recuse myself, um, because I own property at APN number 491081-1. That is my primary residence, and so I will be leaving the meeting, and I will, um, I'll just be tuning in online, so I'll tune in when you guys are done.
Thank you.
Bye.
Give her a second to leave the meeting, and she's out. Okay, uh, I don't think we need a presentation, but Navarre, I wanted to give you the opportunity if you felt you needed to share some things with us before we go back into the hearing.
Um, I do have a brief presentation prepared, if you would like that. But it, but it goes over the staff report exactly.
Bear with me one second here. Do other council members have a preference?
Mr. Mayor, I would just recommend that because we're technically opening a new public hearing, as much as we've heard about this project, for the record, it would probably be good to have the presentation with all the correct information.
Okay. Not hearing any other voices, let's go with that. I see a thumbs up. Great. Navarre, go ahead.
One moment while I pull it up.
There we go.
Whoops. Sorry. Let me try that again. Okay, and... Sorry about that. I've lost it temporarily. All right, Navarre, is that the first slide?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Sherri. And so, uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As you mentioned, this is a presentation on the 47th Street Homes Project. I will be keeping it very brief this evening. Next slide, please. So you're already familiar with the site location on 47th Street between San Pablo Avenue and Adeline Street. Next slide, please. And you're already familiar with the project, which is to demolish four existing units and construct three duplexes in their place for an increase of two units with off-street parking for both bicycles and cars. Next slide, please. Something to clarify about the affordability, about the affordability requirements for this project is that rental projects anywhere in a city of any size that don't require development bonus are not required to provide affordable units. So if you don't need to go over your base FAR, your base density, your base height, you don't need to provide affordable units on-site. You do need to pay for the development bonus, so you need to pay, I mean, sorry, I misspoke. You do need to pay the affordable housing impact fee regardless, but you don't need to provide the affordable unit on-site. So this project, um, does not require any development bonuses, and therefore is not required to provide affordable units on-site. Next slide, please. And here's the existing, uh, existing buildings. Next slide, please. And here's the proposed project from the front. Next slide, please. And the proposed project from the back. Next slide. So there have already been, uh, five meetings on this project. Next slide. And the most recent one on September 15th, six community members spoke. The council inquired as to when the application was deemed complete, and staff has deemed that to be on December 18th, 2019. It was found to be in compliance with all objective standards at that time. Next slide, please. The only change, uh, since the last time you saw this project in September is that the previous meeting, staff made a recommendation to modify a condition of approval regarding the replacement of trees on-site, and that, my, that recommendation has now been incorporated into the conditions of approval. Next slide, please. This project is exempt from CEQA. Next slide, please. And staff's recommendation is to consider the attached resolutions, one for approval and one for denial, however, findings for denial need to be made. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, uh, doesn't have a presentation for you tonight, but would like to address the council.
And what name would that be, Navarre?
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe it should be Mark Rhodes.
Before we move on to the applicant, are there any clarifying questions?
Yeah.
Member Medina?
Uh, Navarre, do you have the findings of, as a separate slide for us to consider?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Just like last time.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, and then we'll take public, we'll open the hearing, take public comment, and then have discussion. So.
Good evening. Uh, this is Mark Rhodes. Can you hear me?
We can.
Terrific. Thank you. Can you please also unmute, uh, CJ Higley, um, of council, and in, in case the council, uh, city council may have any questions of him? Um, but good evening, and, um, thank you, uh, very much again for taking the time to consider the 47th Street Homes Project. Um, and thank you to staff, uh, for all the outstanding work, uh, on the project so far. Um, we have, um, as the applicant team really tried our best, uh, to provide, uh, consistent with all of the city's standards and, and including many that aren't required, uh, to provide a, a very small infill housing project that renews and increases the city's housing stock, contributes to the neighborhood design and character, and does right, uh, by the resident who, uh, was just able to move across the street. This is a high-quality project, uh, that, that really deserves your approval tonight. Um, and in as much as it is also protected by state law, and you've received our letter, uh, to that effect, but we think this is a terrific project and will fit in well with the neighborhood in the future. And, um, I am happy to try to answer any further questions you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any, uh, any questions before we move to public comment and discussion? I'm going to ask that Mr. Rhodes stay on the line because we may have questions as the discussion continues. Okay, so, sorry. That's okay. Yep. It's 7:35 now, so I'll call the public hearing open. And I know we have at least one speaker card, but if we have any others who wish to speak, I see one hand. Um, why don't we take the hand first, the person who's here to speak for their own behalf, and then do the speaker card?
All right, Jilliel Griffiths? Can't see the phone.
Yes, hello. I'm not quite sure how to do a speaker card, or I would have.
Okay.
I don't see that option on my Zoom meeting here. I'm joining you from my phone. But I just want to say that I strongly oppose this project. I live right across the street from it, and, uh, the project requires cutting down the two largest trees on our block, which is what I see out of my living room window. It's going to completely change the way my neighborhood feels. I mean, not to mention my neighbors are already all gone from there, but it's like those trees are such a big part of what makes it nice to live on this street. Not only from this side of the street, but also when I go into the park, you see them from the other side, too. So they're part of what makes it nice to sit in the park that's on our street, on the, um, Temusco Creek Park. It's just going to completely change how it feels to live here. Not to mention the structures themselves, all the designs that I've seen. I only missed one meeting so far. Everything that I've heard about this project and the materials that are going to be put into it just sounds like such a downgrade from what's already there. The houses that are there are so charming. Uh, right now, there's space to have a dinner party in the backyard. There's space to have a garden, space to have a child's birthday party. Um, they look cute. They look like a neighborhood. It's part of why I decided to live on this particular street in Emeryville, that it's doesn't look like what some people think of, what I originally thought of as Emeryville, like it's not just large, cheap apartment complexes. It's cute, old homes with character, uh, that are high quality. Um, and it's just going to be super, super sad if those houses and those trees get ripped down to put in these unattractive buildings that have a completely different language and a completely different quality to them. It's going to absolutely transform the way it feels to live on this block. And I really, really, really hope that you will consider not approving it. I don't know where, I don't know why anyone would even consider cutting those trees down.
Just for clarification, the speaker cards are for people who could not be here and submitted them in advance.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Put any confusion out there. Um, I see 7, 47th Project is wrong, is still on the line. Um, but I, they have a speaker card, so I don't know if we want to unmute them, see if they'd prefer to talk on their own, or if we want to just go straight to the speaker card.
I believe she said she was at work and wanted us to read the card aloud.
I heard that as well, but I always like to give people the opportunity. So let's go ahead and read the card.
All right. Let me just get my timer. Okay, this is from Dana Westmoreland. Where did it go? The city failed to do due diligence by missing the PSA. Now you are afraid of getting sued due to that failure and the lack of real work or research on this project. I ask that you think long and hard on this project, and missing this date is proof that was not done. We have given you all a multitude of reasons that this is a bad project and should be denied. The fear of a lawsuit is not and should not be a part of your decision-making here. The High Threshold for Housing Accountability Act is not a factor in this project. There are a large number of available units at market rate in Emeryville. Just yards away, the bakery loft have 14 available units. The Housing Act is for low to medium-rate housing. If you pass this due to fear or, and/or neglect to vote on this for some reason, it will definitely change my approval rating and voting when you all come up for reelection. As a resident and homeowner of Emeryville, I wish for my representatives to protect me and fight for equal housing and just housing, as well as have no fear of LLCs, corporations, or litigation for actions that are right for the community. Please stick up for us. If you don't, why are you there? And if you're going to just say yes to everything, why are you there? If you're not changing it, you're choosing it. Why are you sitting there? Dana Westmoreland.
Thank you. Okay. I see another hand raised. So let's go ahead and take that comment.
Brian Donahue, go ahead.
Okay. Has Christian Pats, the mayor, has he, uh, uh, blanked his screen? Just want to know, because I can't do my comment until he's blanked his screen. I, and, and I, my video is not working. Has Christian Pats, the mayor, blanked his screen? Could somebody please, uh, tell me so I can make my comment?
So this is counting as your three minutes?
Yeah, could you please not interrupt? Is some, okay, is somebody, uh, you can interrupt to tell me the answer to the question, please. To the rest of you, I will say this project has no affordability, and that's why you should vote no. It's got no affordability. And then the last thing I will say about the project is at, with every vote that these, the, uh, that you are granted as elected officials, with every vote that you take, explicit in that vote is the ability to say yes, no, or abstain. So you are allowed to say no to this project because it's explicitly uh, in, embedded in the idea of elected officials voting is, is that the...
Okay, thank you. Hands? It's time. So where we left off the discussion last time is with Member Bowers' question, and he didn't quite get a chance to, um, delve into his thoughts.
Excuse me, Mayor, did we close the public hearing?
Oh, uh, we're going to, I'm... So this is a procedural question. I think our discussion is part of the public hearing, is it not?
Mr. Mayor, you can, um, our practice here at Emeryville is to have closed public hearing after you have taken the public comment. Um, you can, however, if you so choose, keep the public hearing open through, uh, the duration, um, of the council deliberation, and I would suggest that you would close the public hearing. In that case, I would suggest you close the public hearing after the council has deliberated and, uh, before you take the vote.
Yeah, and that was my intent. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I see another hand has been raised. Um, we have moved on from public comment, but I wouldn't mind with the council's indulgence, letting one more person speak. Um, just because I think it's important in a public hearing to get everybody's thoughts.
Jorge Lopez, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for giving me the chance to speak about this project. Um, yeah, I just want to express that I'm uh, very against this project for the following reasons. So one is like, uh, for example, every time I come from work, I like to sit down and enjoy the view of those beautiful trees, especially in the, in the afternoon, you know, all the birds and animals that live in there. So in order to proceed this, uh, uh, project, uh, those trees need to go down, like, and wow, that would... that would be very, very sad. Secondly, I have seen the project, like, you know, how the new complex would be, and it's really, it doesn't actually match with our street. It looks like completely different. And I don't understand why these houses cannot be repaired, like, it's fixable. I worked in construction, and it's like, you know, you don't need to get, go through, you know, change the whole thing. Yeah, it's, it's very sad, like, you know, if this project would get approved, but I'm totally against that, like, you know, like, I'm not, that design is completely, it doesn't match with our street. It will change completely our street, our view. And yeah, that's basically what I have to say. And thank you again for giving the chance to speak out, but, you know, it would be very, very sad if this project would get approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands. I wanna move forward, so, Member Bouders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the public for, you know, coming out to so many meetings about this. This is a really challenging item for the community, and the council has, the law in front of the council is very clear. And I, I know that the community members want us to take a certain path and do certain things, but we have an obligation, as much as we can, to adhere to the law. And I, I want to just provide a brief outline of my thoughts on this, and then explain kind of where I'm at with this issue, because it's been a challenging item for me. So the, the Housing Accountability Act, Government Code Section sixty-five, five-eighty-nine point five, says, in relevant part, under Section A two A, Legislative Findings Related to the Housing Accountability Act says that the legislature finds and declares, among other things, that California has a housing supply and affordability crisis of historic proportions, and the consequences of failing to effectively and aggressively confront this crisis are hurting millions of Californians, robbing future generations of the chance to call California home, stifling economic opportunities for workers and businesses, worsening poverty and homelessness, and undermining the state's environmental and climate objectives. And I, I note that the California Legislature noted that it's both a housing supply and an affordability crisis. And both of those things are things that have to be addressed, but they seem to be at odds when you further read the act. In Section D of the act, it says that the local agency shall not disapprove of a housing development project, including farmworker housing, for, for very low, low, or moderate income households, or an emergency shelter, or condition approval in a manner that renders a housing development infeasible for these purposes, unless it makes written findings upon a preponderance of the evidence. And then it says in the following subsections that a housing development project, et cetera, has to essentially show that there is a specific adverse impact. And that's defined as meaning a significant, quantifiable, direct, or unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. And so the following, the, there's a list of things that can and cannot be included. And so essentially, the, the task before the council has been narrowed dramatically by the state's action with the Housing Accountability Act. We can only make findings to deny a project in the pursuit of increasing housing supply if we have objective standards. And I would proffer that there's a case that could be made, a bona fide case that could be made, that objective standards could potentially be found. But I will openly admit that the, the path to doing so is, is very narrow. And in, in looking at that, I turned to something that I've always used, which is our furthering fair housing objectives. And so Alameda County, we're part of the Urban Consortium for our Fair Housing Goals and Objectives. And under it, there's a number of provisions that I thought were salient to this conversation. In that, on page Roman numeral two dash three of the county's draft plan from 2019, they note that overall minority residents are being displaced from areas with a traditionally large minority population. Page two four, they say further that in accordance with the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule, the regional analysis of impediments has identified contributing factors from a HUD-provided list from the AFFH Rule Guidebook that create, perpetuate, or increase the severity of one or more of the following fair housing issues. Included in that is displacement of residents due to economic pressures, historical discrimination against people of color, the location and type of affordable housing, and the limited supply of affordable housing within residential neighborhoods. On page two dash seven, the Regional Policy Number Four says that one of the objectives for the Alameda County Caucus is to preserve and rehabilitate existable, existing affordable housing stock. I know there's some discourses to whether the houses that are here before us in this application are actually affordable, as they're not deeded so, but I think that there's a bona fide case to arguing that affordable housing can exist even within a market setting. Regional Policy Five says that to increase the number of affordable housing units is a goal, and Action Five D says jurisdictions within the urban county will cooperate with developers to facilitate the construction of additional affordable housing in projects. And then if you go further on in the affirmatively furthering fair housing report, figure Roman numeral five dash nineteen shows displacement across Alameda County. All census tracts across the city of Emeryville, except for the one on the peninsula, are rated as an ongoing place of displacement and gentrification in our community for a period of five years or more. Data shows that twenty-eight percent of Hispanic and twenty-five percent of black households have been displaced within the last five years across the county, and that rent was the number one reason. Twenty, fifty-six percent of people in Alameda County who are displaced are because of the rent increasing. So the housing affordability crisis is often at odds with the housing production problem. And the city of Emeryville, in identifying what its goals are as part of the urban caucus, lists as regional goal number two jurisdictional policies to maintain, improve, implement policies that support affordable housing and fair housing. And under Activity Two E, it says participating jurisdictions will continue to aim to implement the programs described in their housing elements within their current housing element planning period. If you turn to our housing element, then, which is now part of our affirmatively furthering fair housing goals, under the housing element, let me switch my documents on my screen. Under the housing element, Goal H one says to preserve and improve the city's existing neighborhoods and housing stock. And under Policy H one two, which says to maintain and improve the city's older housing stock, particularly homes located in the Triangle Neighborhood east of San Pablo Avenue and the Doyle Street Neighborhood located east of Hollis Street, Program H dash one dash two dash two says to retain and continue to implement the residential preservation ordinance, which requires the city council's approval for demolition of residential structures related to sensitive neighborhoods and communities. Goal H two of our housing element says to encourage the development of affordable housing for extremely low, very low, and low-income households. And under H two dash two dash six, the program says that the city council will continue to support regional and statewide efforts for new sources of funding for affordable housing and to prevent the displacement of people. I would point that the city council has done this in a number of ways already. You can point to the fact that the cities, the city promoted unanimously Measure C, and voters approved it by a seventy-three percent margin. The city revised its development and bonus regulations to require the inclusion of affordable housing when there was bonus points to be provided for additional development entitlements beyond, by right. The city adopted a rotating fund to help ensure that the below-market-rate homeownership program, if a house was to be foreclosed, would not be lost to market-rate interests. We've produced eighty-seven affordable units, a hundred percent BMR, at thirty-seven oh six San Pablo. We've got thirty-six hundred San Pablo ready to go, forty-three hundred San Pablo ready to go, all of those being a hundred percent BMR. We have turned city-owned property in the same neighborhood as this application through the family front door into a homeless emergency shelter for families. We have a BMR homeownership program that's very high per capita for a city of our size. We've enacted just cause and tenant protection ordinances, and we adopted a COVID emergency rental assistance programming, program using four hundred thousand dollars, as well as private resources, to assist families at a hundred percent AMI or less. In short, the city is doing everything it can to prevent the displacement of people of color, minorities, and low-income people who are identified in our affirmatively furthering fair housing goals. So the question before us is whether or not the discretionary, previously discretionary application to demolish a unit is actually one that is objective or not. And I understand the city staff's reading of, the straight, plain reading of the demolition requirements, and that the standards there are subjective, but I would argue that they're part of a bigger picture. And that as being part of a bigger picture, the city has an obligation to meet its affirmatively furthering fair housing goals, that our housing element spells that for us, and that we, we need to do something about that. So in looking at what we would do, and looking at what is actually equitable, I wanna thank the applicant first for taking these steps that they've taken with the household with, with Ms. Mimi in particular, to provide for her continued residency and participation in a community that she's lived in for a very long time. That's super important to public safety. That's important to the public welfare. And if you listen to the comments that were made at the Planning Commission and by neighbors throughout the testimony that we've taken over the course of these meetings, people feel safe when they know their neighbors, and people feel safe when they have neighbors they can trust and leave their kids with, who keep eyes on the street. But another thing that was noted in our housing element is actually on page two dash nineteen. Female-headed households are considered to be a special needs group in our city's housing element. To the comparatively low rate of ownership that they have for homes, lower income levels, and disproportionately higher poverty rates are experienced in this group. In addition, female-headed households with children face housing discrimination when they seek new homes. As of two thousand and ten, twenty-four percent of Emeryville families, or four hundred and thirty-five, were female-headed, and fifty-four percent of female-headed families included children under the age of eighteen, which is an example in Ms. Mimi's case. The two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven ACS estimated that forty-five percent of single-person households in Emeryville were female. This group may benefit from the city making efforts to provide affordable family housing. As stated in Programs H six dash one dash one and H six dash one dash two, the city will work to encourage additional housing that includes onsite play areas, family programming, and other child-family constraints. In addition to the economic problems, single-mother families may be vulnerable to displacement. So I, I'm gonna stop there, and, and just note that there, there is a record replete in our city's policy documents, and by the actions taken by the council in fulfillment of those things, to justify having some space be affordable, because the legislative goal is both to create supply, but also to have something be affordable. Now, the developer and the applicant were within their right when they chose to propose to separate the original parcel into two parcels by adding a, a new lot line. There's nothing wrong or illegal about that. However, by doing that, it removed them from the rubric of a number of development requirements related to having ten units or more on a property. And so I would like to suggest, because the, the, even, even if I was to make specific findings, Mr. Mayor, the Housing Accountability Act is very stringent. And it makes it very clear that in order to make any findings, even if we were to make them, we would have to afford the opportunity to the applicant to show that they could not feasible, that there was no satisfactorily feasible way to mitigate or avoid the impacts. I think that they've done a good thing with Ms. Mimi. That is not a permanent thing, that is only for the period of her tenancy. And so I would like to ask with, through the mayor, if we could suggest or request that the applicant respond to the following suggestion, that in lieu of me going through and making a whole series of findings, that it, it might actually be possible to, whether or not it's possible in the applicant's mind to mitigate those concerns by offering something in the form of an affordable unit to help the city fulfill its affirmatively furthering fair housing goals by limiting displacement and protecting and providing affordability to our community. And so with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if the applicant wishes to respond to that.
Mr. Rhodes, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Bouders. I share a lot of the concerns and, and also do believe in this project. When you say mitigate the concerns relevant to the project at hand, given the fact that we have the agreement in place with the tenant to allow her to come back, and knowing that that is, that, that, that rental agreement is only for her residency, are you suggesting that we provide one of the proposed new units as an affordable units? Or is it possible, and, and this, I'm going to need a few minutes to discuss with my client, but is it possible that that consideration be one of the units on the Forty-Eighth Street side of the property?
With your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, I would, and thank you for the question, Mr. Rhodes, I would suggest that if the applicant is willing to do that on the remainder parcel, so Subparcel One, which is the non-developed side, I understand the, the related costs and the immediate plans that the applicant has to this project. But getting, because this was initially one unified parcel, getting a dedicated unit, a deed-restricted unit on any of it would be, in my opinion, satisfactory in meeting the, the city's goals. So I would say, with the council's indulgence, I would say either should be acceptable.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then also, just so that we can put this in context, and this, this question is important because it, it provides the owner with potential options, and, and I'm not sure if the council knows this or not, but this, this owner is happy to, to have Section Eight tenants. There, there are some on the other parcel. And so the level of affordability also becomes quite important. I suspect that you are not going to suggest that this be limited at a moderate income level. But are we talking about low or very low? And again, my question is, you know, at low, sometimes that will, will allow for a Section Eight tenant, and, I'm sorry, a very low, and at low, you know, it allows somebody who might not be Section Eight might be making a little bit more money, but it's, it, it might be important to be able to have that option here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I, so I guess the, I would answer your question in two parts, Mr. Rhodes. Very savvy question on the affordability side. If it was to be a rental property, so, and we know that that's a choice that the owner can make at any point. If it was to be a rental property, I agree with you that it could be either very low or low. That would encompass then both the two categories of housing that the city has the most need for in terms of meeting our RENA obligation. And that would, as you noted, both allow Section Eight tenants, but also low, very low, or, well, they're called low, low-income working families who wouldn't be able to otherwise reach market rates. So either, I would say, in a rental context. In a ownership context, I would say that that range should probably shift from low to moderate, only because homeownership for very low income is very hard to sustain and to finance for a family, and it would be very hard to market that property within the city.
Okay. I, I will, I will tell the council that this is not a, a brand-new concept. It is something that we, as a team, have discussed. Is there any chance that I could request of the council a five- or ten-minute recess to discuss with my client?
We have a couple of options here. We can take a recess, and I'm sort of looking at the other council members, or we can move to the next item on our agenda and come back to this. Do council people have a preference? I think it makes sense.
I, I think if we want to, if, 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 if they think they need ten minutes, I would like to give it to them, and maybe we could just do the next item and check in, because depending on that, we just may need to have additional discussions. So I, I would just say, unless others are opposed.
My only concern, we have Member Vice Mayor Martinez check in and then check out again.
Oh. Maybe we can just take a recess and hear what they think, because if they can't do it, then we, we know what we're doing, and we can move forward.
Ten minutes is enough time?
I, I, yes, I, well, I think so. Let me, let me check in with, with my team, and, and when we come back, I'll let you know. And so my question here is, I'm gonna have to get them on the phone, and is, can you mute us, and then I'll raise my hand? Or, or I guess we'll have a set time?
We'll come back at eight fifteen, that's twelve minutes from now.
Okay.
Until then.
And then maybe the clerk could remove him from speaking, so that he can have a private conversation. She's put him in the, back in the attendee.
Yes, and would that include CJ Higley as well?
Yes, please.
All right, I'll do that.
And before I send us to recess, would the city manager please just update the vice mayor, so she is aware that this is taking a while? All right, and with that, we stand in recess until eight fifteen? Okay, I see it as eight fifteen. I think everybody is here, so I will call this meeting back from recess. I just want to check with the city clerk to make sure that she is good on her end.
We're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes, were you able to discuss it with your client?
I was, and thank you again for the time to do that. You know, I just want to point out a couple of things. This is an extraordinary request, and the Forbes family are not home flippers. They're long-term owners in the community. They've been around for a long time. They're stable. They're stable property owners, and they bring that perspective. And so we would like to, as a voluntary condition, offer a two-bedroom unit, as the council member noted, at either very low or low income levels at the owner's election. Because we'd like to honor the council's request, but also, we would also like to preserve some of the long-term rights of the owner. And so we'd like to request that that condition be limited to a twenty-year period. And so we would put that out there, and otherwise, we would be willing to make that offer here this evening in order to move the project forward.
Thank you. I have thoughts on this, but I want to check in with Member Bouters to see if that aligns with his thinking.
Just a couple of questions. Is that on the property being proposed, or is that on the remaining property?
On the Forty-Eighth Street parcel, remainder property, and it would be a two-bedroom unit.
And so you said that, so it's intended to be rental-only? I didn't hear any provision for ownership.
There's not, at this point, there's not an intent to do any kind of condominium conversion, but I think that in the event that there is, that that, the remainder of that condition of approval is agreeable.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose that that is a very welcome offer, and if there is a majority support, Mr. Mayor, I would actually like to either have another recess to draft something briefly or to allow us to move to item twelve point one or two and table this item and come back to it after the next two items, so that there's some time to put that together, if there is support from everybody for this condition.
I, let's, let's do two things first. I saw an inquisitive look from the city attorney, so would he like to speak on this, or shall I just go to get opinion?
No, Mayor, that's, that's fine. Please go ahead and consult with the rest of the council. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something there. All right, so Member Medina, do you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, like Councilmember Bouters, I struggled a lot with this and spent more time, if we can, than I think any of us care to, with the Housing Portability Act. You know, I know what I feel like is the right thing, and I also know that the law is extremely clear and has specifically limited local control in these circumstances. In many cases, for good reason, but this is one where I wish we had a little bit more subjective control we could exert. I think the most specific adverse impact we could find was for displacement, removing affordable housing from the community. This would remedy that, which would kind of just, you know, hop skip the next step anyway. And so I, I would find this to be a very acceptable offer and something that does improve the condition of the project as proposed.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
You're on mute, Scott.
Scott, you're on mute.
Yes, this is an acceptable offer. And I say yes. Let's go forward with this idea.
Okay, so I think there is broad support. There's at least three votes right there for this idea. I think, for me, I think, Member Medina said it well, and I'll probably hit this point again later this evening. The state laws have taken away a lot of local control in these instances and have really given the proviso that you need to find a mitigating factor. If there is a reason to make a finding, then you have to give the applicant a chance to remedy that, and this does that. And so I think this threads that needle of, let me slow down a bit here. We have a very narrow bridge we can cross, and they get a chance to raise the water level by adding more to the pile. They did that this time. So there is, with that in there, I don't think we have any way to do anything other than approve this. I think, I just wanted to say that to the public, I'm not a big fan of this project. I'm not a big fan of knocking down the trees or demolishing some beautiful homes in our neighborhoods. And I do agree with the sentiment that we do have the ability to vote. That is why it comes to a vote. But we have to do that within the guise of the law, and the law here has been crafted in such a way to not allow us, without being able to make findings. And so while we have the ability, it is not a, not within the constraints. So I, I will eventually have to vote to support this measure. Mr. Bouters, how long do you need? And would you want to do it in consultation with the city attorney to?
I, these provisions are not, it's not a lengthy thing. It's a few sentences. Actually, it's just an additional condition of approval. If we just go through the next couple of items, I'm very familiar with item twelve point two. I will obviously listen to the public comment. But I'm pretty sure that if we came back after twelve point two, I would have something I've shared with the city attorney by then.
Okay, so at this point, I think what I'm going to do then, and I might need some help here from the city manager or the city attorney to make sure I do this correctly. Do I want to close the public hearing now? No, I'm seeing a no on that. Let's give, or should I put a pause on it? And what are we calling that? Just?
I will make a motion to table until after twelve point two.
That works. That's what I'm looking for, and I'll second that motion. And can we get a vote, please?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez is recused, and Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, let's give the, somebody want to text the vice mayor so she can return to our meeting? City manager, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just clarifying, are you moving next to twelve point one?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we'll take the, both of those items, twelve point one and twelve point two, and then return with this item?
Correct.
There's the vice mayor.
And I will loop her in while we set up for the presentation for the twelve point one. Vice Mayor Martinez, with your indulgence, I appreciate you stepping out. We're gonna ask you to do it again after twelve point two, and then to have you come back and join us for future agenda items.
No problem.
And all the other end-of-the-meeting stuff. And apologies, this is taking so long, but I think we had a very good fruitful conversation. So twelve point one, and staff, who is presenting?
Mr. Mayor, we have the Public Works Department Director, Mary Grace Houlihan. This is the San Pablo Avenue Mid-Block Crossing Item. The reason this is on your action calendar tonight is because there was a bid protest from the second low bidder, and Ms. Houlihan is prepared to walk through a brief overview of the project and explain how staff came to its recommendation in terms of proposing to award to the low bidder. Or we can just answer questions, if that's the council's preference. So just let us know.
When you and I spoke earlier, what is the status of the bid protest?
I will ask Ms. Houlihan to confirm, but my understanding is that the second low bidder was not going to pursue the protest after understanding staff's explanation of how it came to its recommendation, but I'd like Ms. Houlihan to confirm that. Mary Grace?
Hey. Councilmembers, that is correct. I have spoken with Representative from Vanguard, and their acceptance of the city attorney and staff's resolution on the bid protest and have no intention of proceeding with it. They are very happy to bid on future projects with the city of Emeryville.
With everybody having that information, how would, how would my fellow councilmembers like to proceed? Would you like to go straight to questions, or would you like a brief presentation? Would you like to go straight to questions, or would you like a brief presentation?
Happy to wait for presentation.
Second.
Okay. Scott, you're outvoted here, even if you want to see the presentation, and we're good. So I will go right to, I'll go right to, any public comment on this item?
No online comment cards, but I do see one raised hand.
Great, let's go ahead and take the raised hand.
Brian Donahue, go ahead.
Okay, I am, I noted that the mayor has shut off his, his camera. And so I'll wait until he turns his camera back on to make my comment. So we'll have to wait for that. While we're waiting, this is considered my comment. The wait period.
All right, seeing no other public comments, do councilmembers have any questions? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move the resolution.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bouders is absent.
Aye, I'm here. My video is off, but I'm just typing. I don't want to distract the public. I'm here. Aye.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to 12.2. The actions of the B-PAC Committee.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just provide a few introductory remarks are presented on this evening, this, on this item this evening will be Ms. Nancy Humphries from the, Humphrey from the Public Works Department. You will recall, last spring, we started this process of bringing the motions from the B-PAC to you. We plan to do that on a quarterly basis. We are, this is the next round of process attempt to help guide the council, to give staff direction on how you would like to manage these recommendations from your advisory committee. And so what Ms. Humphrey will walk through is a structure around the 20-some-odd, 22, 25 motions that were forwarded to you from the B-PAC. And what we'd like is to try to get some guidance from you on how you would like to further explore those, and she's gonna give you some suggestions. But with that, I'll turn that over to Nancy to walk you through our brief presentation on this.
Thank you. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Can I check and see if you got the supplemental materials, the new version of the motion tracking list?
I did. And everybody else? Yep, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, well, the city manager has set this up well. It's the second quarterly report of motions that the B-PAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, has made their advisory to council. So, next slide, please. So what we're, we're looking for, what staff is looking for, is direction from council. That direction could be anything, but it might include referral to a planned or ongoing planning process, referral to an upcoming capital improvement program, referral to a council committee for further review, or acceptance and filing for future council consideration. And I want to be clear that this, these are the motions as presented by B-PAC. They have not been vetted, studied, or analyzed by my staff at this point. Next slide. So the motions cover four topics, and as you may have noticed, the, the topics are not listed together on the list. They're listed chronologically. So you, you, you may need to bump around if you're looking at specific motions. I did list the numbers on the, that are on the motion list for each topic. So the topics were basically studies of the Powell Corridor, equity in walking and biking in Emeryville, support for grant-funded projects, and COVID-19 response and quick build recommendations. Next, thanks. So, the studies for the Powell Street Corridor, there were several motions recommending that the city council receive a presentation summarizing data from both the SafeTrack study of the intersections along the Powell Street Corridor and B-PAC's own walking tour of that area west of the Powell Street overcrossing on and around Powell and Christie and, and over past the freeway. And there are specific recommendations about this in items 1 to 3 and 5. So you want me to keep going, and then you discuss all these together?
I think that's probably best.
Okay. So the next category was equity in walking and biking in Emeryville, and there were four motions related to police department policies, one motion regarding committee demographics for, for all committees, not just B-PAC. And those recommendations are number 6 to 9 and number 17 on the, on the motions list. So you know, actually, one thing I, I will say is there are three new items on the list that were, that was distributed yesterday that were not in the original packet. Are we discussing those, or no?
Nancy, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could interject. Nancy, why don't you finish the presentation, and then we'll address those at the end?
Okay, all right. So the next category was support for grant-funded projects. There were several motions about that, and council has already authorized the applications in these motions. No further actions needed on this one. Next, please. And then they had a whole category of recommendations on COVID-19 responses, mostly about either quick build, temporary, or essentially opportunistic actions that could be taken under these changed circumstances. The specific recommendations are in motions number 4, 10 to 13, and 18 to 22. So in August, they created an ad hoc subcommittee for this topic. And in September, that body brought recommendations, which were then prioritized by the committee. They had a meeting just yesterday, and they're continuing this process. So this is not, this is not fully baked. This is what they did in June, July, August. On the next slide. So this is the, this is their prioritized list of what they think is highest priority for a quick build, temporary, or opportunistic response to changed conditions. So, next slide. So that, just to wrap it up, this is again the direction we're looking for, and, and we will be back in January, or we're scheduled in January for the next quarterly, which will include October, November, December, potentially January, motions. With all that said, that, those last three motions on page 7 of the document that you've got, numbers 22, 24, I'm sorry, 23, 24, 25, you could consider those tonight, or you could defer those to the January report, if you prefer.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to us this evening. I think it's important that we get the feedback from our committees. And so, let's go to public comment, and then we'll bring it to, I'm sorry, clarifying questions, then we'll go to public comment. I knew I was missing something. Any clarifying questions? Okay. I see we have a couple of hands.
Yes, and first I'll go to Jordan Wax. Jordan, you also had submitted a written comment, but I'm assuming since you're here that you prefer to make your comment personally?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, go ahead, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jordan Wax. I'm a member of the B-PAC Committee as well as housing. I'm here speaking for myself as an individual tonight. Last night's meeting, you, you've all gotten update on a number of things that happened there. But there was, as always, a big discussion about the Powell-Christie intersection. And a lot of us expressed, in fact, the consensus was that this was an extraordinarily high priority for the city. We got feedback from staff that, yes, like, this is an extraordinarily, extraordinarily complicated problem for the reason that you have adjoining one of the most important pedestrian amenities in the city with one of the most important transportation hubs in the East Bay. Emeryville has the unfortunate responsibility as a city that wants to be more active and transit-oriented of having to process all of this traffic, and that is, that is ground zero right there. And so while there are many things that we need to do with lanes and signage and so forth, I think one of the central things in response to this comment that we need to think outside the box for this, that goes kind of beyond B-PAC, is what if we take that intersection and literally make it a feature, not a bug? What I'm suggesting is, is to take the Powell-Christie intersection and, and create there a sort of landmark that serves the dual purpose of making sure people know that they didn't cross from San Francisco across the Bay Bridge and get off the 99 40 miles north of Fresno there in Emeryville. And the landmark that they're looking for is not AMC Theaters. It is not the, the, the Home Depot sign. It is, it is not IKEA. It is this, and this intersection provides a lot more opportunity for the civil engineers to implement more robust signage that would reduce so much of the confusion that is at the core of why that intersection is so dangerous. Guiding people through there, letting them know, hey, you're back in the city, start driving like it. I, I, I think a full revisualization of the intersection is really what's called for in conjunction with all the things that we need to do to just get people through there. So, so that is, that is my very quick response to the, the suggestion that we think outside the box on the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another hand?
We do. Brian Donahue, go ahead.
Yes. On July 21st of 2020, Mayor Christian Patz said the following. "We need to hear community members speak their truth and feel comfortable doing that." "This can feel uncomfortable for the council members, but that's how we know we're having the right conversation." And I, I mentioned that because you all will note that the, the mayor has turned off his camera, showing us that he is uncomfortable. He's also showing us he's, doesn't want to entertain the idea of citizens speaking their truth. So I'm saying hypocrisy. So I'll, I'll wait for the mayor to come back on, and I'll, and I'll finish my comment about this topic.
So, Mr. Donahue, you can either use your time to talk, or we're gonna move on in the agenda?
Hold on, please. I'm being interrupted. I'm allowed three minutes to speak, and that includes silence. So please don't interrupt unless you plan on turning your camera back on and listening to what citizens have to say.
Kind of enjoying the silence, but I feel I'm more wasting others' time.
Could you please stop interrupting? You must have planned on turning your camera back on and listening to what the citizens have to say. Please stop interrupting me, please. I have, the Brown Act provides that I have three minutes to speak uninterrupted. Please stop speaking. Start, you can start the timer back again to the city clerk.
All right, I think we've had enough of this. Sherry, please.
Is my time up? The city clerk, is my time up?
We're moving on. Your time is up. You were not speaking.
No, I didn't, no, no, that's not, you're, you're interrupting me. Not speaking is a form of protest. Protest is allowed, according to the Brown Act. This is a Brown Act violation by you interrupting me. Are you?
Talking, your time is there. At the minute you're not talking, we're moving on.
Mr. Mayor, he was removed from the public comment space. He's not here.
Excellent. All right, we can move forward then. Okay. Member Medina, I'd like to go to you.
All right, guys. Now you know how I spend my Mondays. So B-PAC is a committee that I have to commend for extraordinary attention to detail and a true dedication to improving the public space around them to make life safer and more enjoyable for the people within Emeryville. And so that fervor and dedication has yielded quite this list of things. And I have endeavored to break them down as well as possible with some recommendations. If you guys are interested in hearing my opinion. I did want to piggyback off of what Jordan said, because I was prepared to liaise tonight that the meeting on Monday had a really robust discussion about their concerns about Powell Street. And while the slide Nancy provided was completely correct that until September, number one, it was wayfinding, they collectively agreed that their highest priority was now making Powell Street corridor safer for bikes and pedestrians. And so, you know, I think this is a really interesting way of viewing all their information at once. If I can make a recommendation for the few Um, if I can make a recommendation for the future, I would ask that maybe we have staff include an estimate of the, the cost and the staff time required for each proposal and have B-PAC review that before they send this collection to us, just so we're all on the same page. Um, and so, you know, moving forward, I, I would suggest that would be a good way to collect and consider this information. Um, for tonight, I would recommend that item one, three, five, and nineteen, um, be considered as part of our active transportation plan update. Um, the items four, ten through thirteen, and twenty, uh, be referred to our Transportation and Public Works Committee because those are all the COVID-nineteen improvements and we have a standing item for that. We can consider those part of that work there. Um, that the members present tonight consider whether or not they'd like items six through nine to be referred to the Public Safety Committee. That's not my committee, so I don't want to be presumptuous, but they are directly related. Um, I don't know what to do with number seventeen, the demographic, um, data collection one. I looked at B-PAC's purpose and definition, um, and it seems to be outside of their definition and purpose um, within the city, uh, charter. So, seems to be kind of outside of scope, so I don't know if we want to do anything with it or not. But those are my recommendations. I'm happy to repeat them more slowly if anyone would like.
Yeah, um, I'd like to hear from others. I have some thoughts on that one and the public safety ones. But anybody, any other member like to chime in? On this? No? Okay. I would like to, uh, echo the, uh, suggestions made by Member Medina. I think that those are the appropriate places to have those conversations. I think these are some really, well, there's a diversity of topics here, but I think there's some important things to cover. And I think those are the right places to do it, particularly the ones, because I'm on the Public Safety Committee. I think that's the, the great place to, to have those conversations. Um, staff, before I go too far down the rabbit hole, did you guys track what she was saying? Were you able to capture all of those? Um, as to which will go to which committee?
Mr. Mayor, council member could repeat the numbers again. I got the, I got the, the locations, but I'm not sure I captured all the numbers.
For sure. And I'll note that I left some numbers off. Those are ones that were ad hoc committee or letters of support that have already passed. So this is not one through twenty-three. And I've also only done one through twenty-three. I didn't, we didn't discuss if we wanted to do the last period or not. So, um, numbers one, three, five, and nineteen be considered as part of our active transportation plan update. Number four, ten through thirteen, and twenty be referred to Transportation and Public Works Committee. Number six through nine is the Safety Committee, Public Safety Committee. That's what I got.
Excellent.
And I'm going to congratulate myself that I'm catching up to your speed because I actually got your numbers. Thank you.
And then I want to address, um, I'm going to call it four point two because that's what it was on the, the original list. But the, uh, tracking the demographic data, you know, this is the perfect time to have this conversation. Um, and I'm going to put a, a pitch out. We are in the final days of the census. If you have not filled out your census form, now is a good time. That data gets turned around pretty quickly. Thank you.
Oh.
Um, and so in twenty-twenty-one, we also, uh, look at the makeup of our committees. And I think it's an opportunity for the city clerk, um, when she brings that item to us, to bring those two things together and allow us to further that conversation because I think that gets at, um, the demographic data for the committees to reflect to the demographics of the city. And, you know, um, we, we always seem to have the right number of applicants for the committees, but never a, 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 uh, it's false, I'll say cornucopia to choose from, never as many as we would like. And so we need more, more people applying and I think we can do some active recruiting to make sure that we line those up in the fall. Um, I mean, in the spring, wow. I mixed myself up there. So, um, with that, do we have other questions or comments on this item? And it's not an action item. I guess it is technically an action item, but we're moving these to committee. Do you need us to vote on that officially?
That would be appreciated, Mr. Mayor. If you could just encapsulate the council members', um, proposals in a motion.
Sure, and it looks like Member Medina is ready to do that.
Um, I propose that items one, three, five, and nineteen are considered as part of our active transportation plan update. The items four, ten through thirteen, and twenty are referred to the Public Works and Transportation Committee. The items six through nine are referred to the Public Safety Committee. And that in future reports, um, that we get an estimate of costs and staff time for each motion that is shared with B-PAC prior to it coming to city council.
And I will second that with the friendly amendment that four point two, or however it's numbered now, be, uh, sent to the city clerk's office for her to, uh, consider as we move forward with committees in the spring. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
Sure.
Great, so we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the vice mayor to step out of the meeting again. Right? And bring us back to item eleven point one, the public hearing. And, Mr. Bauders, are you ready to make a motion?
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, if I could actually, is there a possible way to, for the benefit of the applicant and the council to sheet, screen share what I have drafted and been texting with the city attorney about?
Sherry, if you make him a co-host, he can do that. Mr. Lopez, I see your hand is raised. Um, and I don't think you're, I think you're on the last item. Um, and we have done public comment on this one. So I don't want to ignore you, but I wanted to make you aware of where we are in the agenda. So, Sherry, were you able to make Mr. Bauders a co-host?
I am now. I'll speak in my screen share.
Perfect.
And I can pick which document. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a nice feature.
Okay, can you all see, are there multiple documents on the screen, or can you see the one that's in front of here?
I just see. Yeah.
Okay, great, because it shows my full screen. Okay, so, um, I'm proposing, um, there's an exhibit A under the resolution called Conditions of Approval. And I'm proposing that at the bottom of page four, um, which is the section related to, um, the, in this, Roman numeral two requires the applicant to do things in a certain time period, and that's the section related to prior to a building or demolition permit. And so, um, this would be adding a new paragraph to Roman numeral two subsection B. This would be paragraph six. Um, and I've titled it Applicant Proffered Regulatory Agreement for a Deed-Restricted Unit. And it reads, for those who are having trouble at home, "Before the issuance of a demolition permit, the applicant shall enter into a regulatory agreement with the city for the provision of one deed-restricted two-bedroom unit for a period of twenty years on LLA parcel one, that's Lot Line Adjustment Parcel One, for Assessor's Parcel Number forty-nine dash eleven seventy-five dash eight dash three, which is the parcel, um, as it's listed in Exhibit Seven of our packet for the public record. Exhibit Seven, there's a, a Lot Line Adjustment page, and that's where I got the parcel number from. "As it appears in the application at the time of approval, the regulatory agreement is to be recorded against the property. A rental unit restricted by the regulatory agreement shall be available to a low-income or very-low-income household as defined using the area median income limits and standards set forth by the City of Emeryville's Housing Affordability Table. An ownership unit restricted by the regulatory agreement shall be available to a moderate-income or low-income household as defined using the area median income limits and standards set forth by the City of Emeryville's Housing Affordability Table. The city manager is authorized to negotiate and execute any and all additional provisions of the regulatory agreement that are in furtherance of or consistent with this provision. This provision was offered by the applicant and accepted by the city council at a public hearing approving the accompanying resolution." And unless, um, I would just ask, Mr. Mayor, maybe we invite Mr. Rhodes to confirm that that is what he offered. Um, and if that's the case, then I would then suggest we close the public hearing before I make a motion.
I think it's, uh, yeah, go ahead and is Mr. Rhodes, sorry, I have to scroll down. I do not.
I, I am here. Um, thank you very much. I'm just, um, thank you. Um, yeah, I've now checked in with, uh, everybody by text and, um, we, that is agreeable to us. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
If you, um, wish to close the hearing, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to take public comment on it. Again, that's your prerogative. And I leave this up, but if you don't, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, I feel like we've had a couple of public hearings, taken lots of public comment on this item. And we are ready to vote. So I'm going to close the public hearing. It is eight fifty-five. And move in, look to you for a motion.
Um, if no other members wish to comment, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving this project with the following amendment, um, that the conditions of approval attached to the resolution as Exhibit A be amended in section Roman numeral two, capital B, adding sub-paragraph six. Um, as it appears on the screen today, does the city attorney need me to read this, or can we recognize this in the record as being the, um, the amendment? How would you like to capture that?
Um, that's fine. I think that the record shows that, um, this is on, uh, this is part of the administrative records, so I don't think you need to read it into, into the record.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Mayor, with that, uh, amendment to the resolution and the conditions of approval, I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, and do we have a second? Can you unshare your screen?
I absolutely can do that.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and before I call for the vote, I just want to reiterate, take advantage of my position and reiterate what I said earlier. We have some laws with really good intentions to increase our housing stock, but they have the unintended consequences of allowing us or forcing us to do things that maybe the community doesn't want or that really aren't with the intent of the legislature. And it forces votes like this. So while I will be supporting this measure, I am not fond of cutting down trees or demolishing homes. Um, and this is why I was worried about these measures, um, to streamline housing development at a statewide level. So with that, if you will take the vote, please, Sherry?
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez is recused, and Mayor Pats?
Aye, and I want to thank Member Bauders for his work on that, and I want to thank the applicant for coming to a wonderful conclusion. Um, while I had challenges with it, I think we did the best for Emeryville, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the applicant as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I think that worked out really well. Um, okay, that brings us to getting the vice mayor back. There, they, there she is. Welcome back. Okay, so we are now at Department Head Reports.
Let's see. Charlie, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pats, members of the city council, this is my monthly report on the uh, Planning Commission and their recent actions. The Planning Commission held a meeting on September twenty-fourth, and there was one item on the agenda, which was the San Pablo Affordable Apartments. The commission held a second study session to review the proposed ninety-unit, hundred percent affordable housing project by RCD at thirty-six hundred San Pablo Avenue. There was a robust discussion and the commission generally expressed support and enthusiasm for the project. Staff will be making a decision on the project by the October twentieth deadline that is mandated by SB thirty-five. Um, if the, if the council has any questions, I would be happy to respond to those. And, uh, I also have an additional issue that I would like to discuss with the council.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Bryant, go ahead and bring up your question.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pats. This has to do with scheduling of the October twenty-second Planning Commission meeting, which would be the next regular commission meeting. As the council is aware, my report on previous Planning Commission meetings is made to the council within the fifteen-day appeal period so that the council can appeal any items to yourselves should you wish to do so. In this regard, there is an issue with the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on October twenty-second. Because the council has canceled your November third meeting, there is now no city council meeting within the fifteen-day appeal period of your, uh, of the October twenty-second Planning Commission meeting. And there are two appealable items on that agenda. One is the relocation of the Ohana Retail Cannabis Dispensary to a new site across the street. And the other is a tree removal permit for four trees, um, three on Doyle Street and one on the Greenway as part of the re-landscaping of the Elevation Twenty-Two project. So staff has identified three possible options for dealing with this situation. One is, as used to be the practice several years ago, I could send an email to the council following the commission's October twenty-second meeting. And then any council member who wanted to appeal an item could ask the mayor to schedule a special meeting for the purposes of deciding whether to appeal the item. In this case, the October twenty-second commission meeting date would not need to be changed. Secondly, the commission's meeting could be postponed for one week to October twenty-ninth. And the council could then schedule a special meeting for November tenth, which would be twelve days after the commission meeting to receive my report on the commission's actions. And third, the commission's meeting could be postponed for two weeks to November fifth, or three weeks to November twelfth, either of which would be within fifteen days of the next regular city council meeting on November seventeenth. So, uh, staff would appreciate the council's direction as to which option to implement so that we can schedule the next Planning Commission meeting.
Preference? I am fine with the email solution. Uh, Member Medina, was that a yes or, that's a yes, okay. Member Bauders, did you have thoughts?
Um, I'm fine with that process, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask a clarification on the second project, the tree removal? Elevation twenty-two, not Loop Twenty-Two, are we talking about down at Doyle and Powell? Is that what we're talking about?
Right, it's, well, it, the project is called Elevation Twenty-Two, and the street, the private street that's inside of it is called Loop Twenty-Two.
Oh, okay, all right. So you're saying a tree along the Greenway and then trees within, in the project or along Doyle Street?
Uh, these would all be, uh, uh, trees on public property. Uh, that's what triggers a tree removal permit. So there's three street trees in the Doyle Street right-of-way. And then one's tree on the Greenway on the city property of the Greenway.
I'm fine with your process, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Any other department head reports? No? Okay, future agenda items. Miss Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to put a discussion item on, um, our next agenda. I don't need a staff report generated. Um, but I would like to discuss with everyone the potential of East Bay Community Energy um, getting rid of the bright, excuse me, the Brilliant One Hundred product. So there are three products that East Bay Community Energy offers to the customers. The, um, the base product is called Bryce Bright Choice, and that's, um, just the base product, which is priced on par with electricity from PG&E, but it is cleaner than, uh, PG&E, um, their electricity. And then there's a bump up, and that is called the Brilliant One Hundred product. And that is, uh, one hundred percent GHG-free. And many cities in Alameda County have upgraded their municipal accounts all the way up, and a couple of cities have upgraded everyone up to, um, Brilliant One Hundred. And then finally, there's a renewable one hundred product, which is one hundred percent renewable. Um, EBCE will be considering what the future of the Brilliant One Hundred, that's the middle product, um, is going to be because it, because it's at this time no longer cost-effective. So it's not paying for itself, and we have to subsidize it with the, um, the price of the other products. So I'd love to have council weigh in on this, um, because tied into this conversation is whether or not we receive a nuclear allotment from PG&E, um, for energy. And Scott's well-versed on this issue as, as he's, um, he's met with activist groups and talked to EBCE staff. Um, so he's very familiar with this, but I'd love to get a, a take from the rest of council. It's a more in-depth conversation. Um, but just want to see where you are because it's definitely, it's been a, a hot button topic in, uh, many cities in Alameda County.
I support putting that on the agenda. Yep.
Thank you, and sorry for the long-winded explanation.
All right.
Member Bauders, you had some future agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. Um, the first is not, to, just for staff's benefit, is not urgent, not anything. Um, but the lead, the, um, Healthy Homes JPA Board, um, we received it. Uh, but the lead, the, um, Healthy Homes JPA Board, um, we received an update recently, uh, about how the particularly dry and smoky air has impacted houses. And it turns out, uh, we have a new Healthy Homes Initiative now to take on. Um, it's actually led to a circumstance where, um, there's been an increase in termites. And with termites, it's actually, we've found, um, that termiteicide, uh, whatever you want, the, the products that kill termites. Um, there is evidence that that product is a fumigation product that requires a person to leave the house for anywhere from 24 to 72 hours typically. Um, but it's actually toxic to, um, pregnant women and other vulnerable groups. And the problem is kind of landlord-tenant based in the sense that, um, technically, if a landlord has to fumigate someone's unit, um, they're not giving people information about the fact that the fumigation, the, the material and the, the smoke, the, there's a word for it, somebody will help me with it. But the, the fog, basically, it actually stays on fabrics and carpet. Um, and so children can come in contact with their bed sheets, their clothing, their draperies, the carpet. Um, and there's no information being provided, and landlords aren't currently obligated to necessarily clean someone's clothes or wash the carpet or do things if they fumigate for termites. Um, so we've, as a board, uh, asked the county staff to do additional homework and research about, um, the, the consequences of that, et cetera. And I think, um, I just want to put on the, a future agenda, not for an urgent thing and not to ask staff to run around and do any homework because I want the county's research to come back first. But when it does come back, I would like Emeryville to look at whether we need to amend our tenant protection ordinance to have a provision. That we need to have a tenant protection. My dog is puking, sorry. Um, go outside, baby girl. Don't puke in your bed. Um, that we need a tenant protection ordinance that, um, you all, welcome to my house. Thank you, to, to mitigate and provide for, um, tenant protection. So that's, that's the first thing, if there's support for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one is, in light of the conversation that we had, um, over the past, um, months about the project that was approved tonight. Um, I know that there's work being done by staff to develop, and we have a contract for objective, um, housing standard update and design and, uh, for, for our, for our planning code. But I think we should take one thing and put it on an accelerated path. Um, I think we should actually ask staff to come back with objective criteria related to the demolition of homes, related to displacement. Um, I think that this was a sign that if we, we are going to struggle with the, the balance. I think the mayor said it really well this evening. The state, you know, stripped some local control away. And in some cases, cities need that. But in some cases, it has this, you know, consequence of harming, um, vulnerable populations. And I, I struggle as somebody who supports new housing. I struggle with the displacement of vulnerable people and as a tenant attorney. So I, I just feel like we should pull that one out of the stack and ask staff to maybe just directly work on that and make that a priority so that we don't have this kind of problem going forward with the community.
Support. Not sure I said it well earlier, but.
You said it, you said it well. I think so. Thank you.
Uh, Member Donahue, Member Medina? No? Okay. Um, just quickly cleaning up the things, I failed to mention Estrella Vista had the ribbon cutting on Friday. I was there with Member Donahue. It was wonderful. Uh, Telemundo, who is actually doing some of the best news out there right now, was there covering it. Um, and so if you're fluent in Spanish, you can see it. Uh, and with that, I think we are adjourned. It is 9:09.
Aye.